I'd like to call for a staff meeting for November the 29th. If we could introduce ourselves.
Communications manager, Bridget Wardy. Assistant clerk, Kristi Rishel.
Clerk to the board, Leslie Harvey.
Hi, Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Hamilton County Commission Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludow, County Administrator.
Michael Freeman, Labor Counsel.
Thank you all so much. Stephanie Summer Odom is President of the Board, and we will move forward. We have quite a few things to do today. First item on the agenda is comprehensive update by our Commissioner Greg Kaskervan, our Health Commissioner.
Well, good afternoon Commissioners. Happy Wednesday, or Tuesday. Today I'll start with the numbers. We have seen just a slight continued increase in COVID-19 numbers. We are at 131 cases per day right now. It's a seven-day average. That's up from about 115 when I was last here two weeks ago. We are seeing continued even distribution around Hamilton County. There are a couple zip codes where we are seeing slight increases, but at this point nothing alarming or major. We continue to see Omicron sub-variants being what is spread throughout the community, particularly the BQ1 and the BQ11. From the graph on the screen, you can see, whoops, behind the screen there, you can see the two colors of green make up those two sub-variants. So how that looks, and you hear me say this all the time with regards to hospitalizations, they are very accurate count in our community. We know that a lot of times people are using at-home test kits, and those are not reported. And so similar to the COVID numbers, we are seeing increases in hospitalizations, although not at an alarming rate so far. For reference, today we are at 137 individuals within our hospital system. This is up from 124 two weeks ago. We have 21 individuals within the ICU. This is up from 14, so a slightly sharper increase in the ICU admissions. And then also, we have 10 individuals in the hospital on ventilators. That is up from eight two weeks ago. Our community continues to show up at testing clinics, both in public health settings as well as out at many of the private pharmacies that are within our community. We are still recommending, if you've not gotten that booster shot, or even if you've not had your first COVID vaccine, today is not too late to go out and get that. So we're still recommending it. Our clinic is operating five days a week at Wesley, which is in Norwood, near the Board of Elections, but we're also still doing community sites, also still have homebound vaccination teams. So if you or a loved one are unable to make it out to a clinic, you can still contact us, and we will get that vaccine out to you. In addition to COVID-19, other respiratory illnesses that we are seeing, we are seeing a very early flu season. This first slide is national data showing the red line being this year's flu data, and these are cases per 100,000, and you can just see much earlier season than we have seen in the last five years. The last time we saw a flu season this early was in 2009, so it's very, very early for us. And I think also worth referencing, you can't really see it, but along the bottom line, along the x-axis, there's a light faint green line that represents 2020 flu data. So that's the year of COVID shutdowns and lots of behavior changes in our community. Same thing happens if I were to throw that line on the Hamilton County data that I'm displaying now. We are seeing a very sharp increase in flu cases compared to the black line, which represents a five-year average. And if you were to look at 2020 data, that would be almost nonexistent for flu. I share this just as a constant reminder, it's respiratory season, people are inside in close proximity, people are enjoying holidays together, Thanksgiving just happened, and I just want to continue to remind folks to do some of those things that we have done for the last few years, which includes keeping sick at home, hand washing, covering your cough, and just kind of being aware when you're out and about. And then lastly, if you've not been vaccinated for flu or COVID, we would strongly recommend that you do that. The last slide I have for you today shows monkeypox. We have had one additional case in Hamilton County in the last two weeks, and you can see the national trend continues to diminish, hopefully to zero within the next couple months. Those are my slides, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation and your continued work, and let your staff know that we really appreciate what you're doing.
Absolutely, we'll do.
I don't have any questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
I just wanted to, if you could highlight again, as we're going into the, I guess, holiday season, flu season, all those kind of things, and people still have questions about if they have other issues, can they take their shingle shot and take the booster shot? Could you just highlight that again, because I know that's on people's minds as they go into getting a lot of other shots during this time of year?
Yeah, so I'm only familiar with flu and COVID. That is what I've seen recently. Those two are safe to take together. If you have different combinations that you don't see routinely, like shingles and COVID, I would always try to consult either with a pharmacist if you're getting it at a pharmacy, or your physician if possible.
Okay. And I want to also indicate, giving out those free test kits, which I didn't get my hands on when you were here, but that is huge, because I was at the pharmacy, and it's like a madhouse at the pharmacy now. I don't, you know, I don't know if we have a shortage of pharmacists, but I saw the exact COVID test kit, and I saw a price on there, like 20-something dollars, it was like $23. And so here we were giving them out for free, so I just want to again commend you and of course, our board in saying that we want to make sure that cost is not a reason for you not to be able to have access to both the shot as well as the test kit. So I just wanted to compliment you on that as well.
Well, thank you. And if I could point out, if you are interested in free test kits, there's a couple ways you can go about getting them. You can always get them at our office at Hamilton County Public Health at 250 William Howard Taft. You can also go to our vaccine clinics, which includes the Wesley Clinic that I mentioned. Additional resources are listed on testandprotectnc.com, which is funded by the county commissioners, as you know, and it's been a great resource for the last several years for COVID-19. That resource also includes the county's COVID-19 testing program, which is active and well, and it includes free PCR testing, so the most accurate test. So if somebody's trying to get tested, thanks to the three commissioners here, we are able to still provide that here in Hamilton County.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Treehouse.
Yeah, thanks Greg, and thank you for being here. Do you have any idea how many people took advantage of the clinic that we had in this building a couple weeks ago?
That number was shared with me, and I do not recall any longer. I do know, yeah, that sounds about right, about 57. And we had a first shot here. Somebody got their first shot that day, which was always exciting.
Did you distribute the testing kits?
Several hundred test kits were given out at that clinic that day as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, I took a couple of them myself. Commissioner Reese, I'm sorry you missed that. I got my free test kits, and they were very, it was very well done, it was very well run. People were very friendly and welcoming, so thanks again for the team for doing that.
Happy to help.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Our next item on the agenda is property tax rebate discussion. I know our Administrator's going to give a general discussion, because we do have to vote on this on Thursday.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And really, this is not designed to be a substantive discussion from the administration, more just from a process perspective. As you indicated, that we have a Thursday deadline to vote on this, to certify whatever rebate is ultimately decided upon to the property taxes for 2023. So with that, the administration's made a recommendation, however, we will on Thursday bring forward by leave resolutions constituting multiple options, everything from a full PTR, 30%, all the way down to the administration's recommendation as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but really just wanted to remind the board of the process, and from a transparency perspective, let people know that it would be on the agenda as a by leave item for Thursday, and we'll have multiple options for the board to consider at that time.
Thank you, and I certainly appreciate the additional information that came from you, and also from John. It really did shine the light on where we would be in the future, whatever decision we made as it relates to this tax rebate discussion. I will open it up if there are any questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for the information. I just think for the pleasure of those watching, Mr. Administrator, what is your recommendation?
So my recommendation initially was just over 9%, which was 8-point-something, 8 million some odd. We got November sales tax in, which allowed us to increase that a bit, so the recommendation's up to 10.5%, which I think is closer to 9 million. So my recommendation was made with the intent to keep a reserve balance of roughly 85% to 100% of the maximum annual debt service that comes out of that fund as a reserve balance. But ultimately, this comes down to a matter of risk tolerance and policy priorities for the board. So happy to answer any questions between now and Thursday in terms of giving the board information for your ultimate decision on Thursday.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And then also, we had asked a question, or you had made a presentation, and you indicated that the tax increase that people voted on in, I believe, 1996 or '97 for this stadium, that is not a restricted fund. It's up to us, but we had chosen it to be a restricted fund. It really is all general fund. But prior, and I'm not suggesting we don't, but I just think it's important that people know that it is only, it is self-restricted, not restricted by the Ohio Revised Code.
It is restricted by policy, correct. So we've always operated that as a restricted fund, but recognizing that the obligations in that fund ultimately could be general fund obligations. At one point in time, just to maybe put a finer point on that, back in 2007, '08, '09, the fund was coming very close to insolvency, and one of the thoughts, or one of the concepts for addressing that was declaring bankruptcy in that fund to alleviate ourselves or eliminate those liabilities. And the response that we got back was that in order to do that, the entire general fund would have to declare bankruptcy as well, because ultimately, those are obligations of the general fund at the end of the day. So yes, to answer your question, we have restricted it by policy so that the general funds and the general tax revenues of the county are not going to subsidize the riverfront operations, but it is in fact, the sales tax is a general resource of the county, correct?
Gotcha. And for clarification, I know you went back some years, is that fund in bankruptcy right now? I just want to make sure, because as they're writing, they hear the word bankruptcy.
The fund is solvent today.
Right, exactly.
Yes, exactly.
And then also, from a policy standpoint, because we weren't here, and every commission gets to do their own policy, and I'm not suggesting that we would change, but I think we just need to be honest with the taxpayers, that when they voted on that, they didn't vote for parking garages, it was for stadiums, and we decided to fund other things on the riverfront from that fund, these obligations that we have. I don't know, was parking garages in it? I know they had a contract before you got here and we got here, that kind of screwed the taxpayers as known now as the Bingo's Lease, but when they went to the ballot, what they actually voted on, it had nothing to do with parking garages and those things. I thought it was only for stadiums.
It was for stadiums and riverfront, and riverfront, and riverfront development, I believe, but most of our, most of our parking is actually funded out of the Enterprise Parking Fund, not out of that, not out of the stadium sales tax fund.
Gotcha.
So if people are watching, all the parking activities going on, the vast majority of that is funded out of our Enterprise Parking Fund, a separate fund than the stadium and riverfront sales tax fund.
I just want to see where the debt is, because it just seems like we can't keep the promise to the taxpayers, but we, when they're bringing other things, we say we have to do it. You know, when they bring a, you know, we've got to refund the Bingo's for $8 million just for Wi-Fi, we've got to pay that back. And the question has always been, we have to do it. But when we do something for the taxpayers, they were also promised at the same time, stadium, riverfront, and a 30% rebate. It seems like the 30% is always the one that takes the heat on, well, we can't afford it. But everything else, we have to afford, whether they, you know, the Reds as well as the Bingo Stadium, whether the Reds are winning or losing, we must pay for this stuff. But when we come to the taxpayers, we say, that is subjective. And that's why I'm recommending the 30%, and I just want to be, I put it out there, I don't have any qualms about it, I believe we could do it and still be fiscally solvent. I think we can do it, just like we have to do these other things for the Bingo's and the Reds, if we can do it for sports teams, we've got to be able to do it for the homeowners that's paying for a lot of this. And that's where we kind of differ. We also, Warren County had a whole tax holiday, no taxes, and they were only one in the state, and I kept wondering, how did they do it? How come we can't do it? So I just wanted to put that out there to my colleagues. For me, it's just hard to wrap my mind around, it's fiscally responsible to pay for the sports teams and keep our commitment, but fiscally unresponsible to keep our commitment to the homeowners who are struggling. And I'm telling you, people are really, really struggling. I mean, just before I got here, I mean, Pastor Damon Lynch, a new prospect, was calling me, telling me, people are, I'm talking about the middle class, they are really trying to stay above the water. So I just wanted to put that out there. I was disappointed that the administration did not recommend 30% at a time when we're looking at all this, all these other things that we are funding out of that so-called fund. And then we come to the taxpayers, we say, oh, we're going to bankrupt if we do something for the homeowners, but then when it's time to do something for professionals, sports teams, and I, you know, everybody knows I love sports, but we start doing it for them, we figure it out. And I just think we, I think now more than ever, people are struggling to just hold on. And I know you will say, well, we got a mortgage program down there, that's only for a couple months. People don't want to have to go to the mortgage program. They want to be able to pay their mortgage and be able to afford their house. We just did a tax increase on them for mental health. I mean, my goodness, let's give them a break. So that's where I'm at on the 30%. I know that sometimes I put something out there, we find every piece of paper and number we can find to say it can't be done, but I do believe it can be done, and we can keep it solvent, and we can continue to be afloat, but we can also make sure that the people who own a house in this town, in this county, can also stay afloat. It's just hard for me to see all these big, big, big things that we're doing, or have to be obligated to do, and we cannot keep the promise to the taxpayers. And it's not their fault they got screwed, that it didn't, that when they went to the ballot, it wasn't written in the language. It's not their fault that they got screwed without this commission board, that we weren't here, I'm sure we would have had a better deal, but it's not their fault they got screwed behind the curtain with all of the paperwork and the type of lease agreements that Hamilton County in the past agreed to. And now they're stuck with not being able to keep the promise. So that's where I'm at. I'm hoping that we can do that. I don't know where it's going to land, but I do want to say where I stand on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you. I too want to thank John Bruegen for running all those projections, so that we have a better understanding of the percentages we're looking at, and what it means, never mind for next year, but the year after and the year after, and, you know, where the fund heads, depending on what we do. So that information's been very helpful, and I know we're all seeing the information that's being requested by all of us to all of us, so it's been helpful to have all of that, try to make a sound decision here. So I'll look forward to the conversation. I suspect we'll have this conversation on Thursday, so I'll reserve my comments till then. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanted to mention to those that are watching, I also have an opinion as it relates to the 30% and evaluating the information, and certainly will give that opinion and discussion from the information that I've read on Thursday. So, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a 2023 budget discussion. Our Administrator Jeff Aludow. I just wanted to mention, if anyone is in here that wants to speak, you really need to fill out a card. I have one here, but I'm just want to make sure nobody's here that would like to speak. Okay, Jeff?
Thank you, Madam President. So the next two items really blend together, but I did separate them on your agenda, budget discussion, and, thank you Kristi, and the budget public hearing. So for the budget discussion, I wanted to do two things. Number one is I have, and have provided to the board, an updated memo on the policy guidance that we'd received from each commission office, so I just wanted to use this as a time to draw your attention to that. We'll be having additional conversations with board offices about what ultimately makes it into the final recommended budget. Obviously, those items will be publicly discussed as well, but if there are any comments or questions on the budget or the budget process, I wanted to have just a period of time on the budget where we could have that discussion before we get into the public hearing. And then I do have a very short presentation to walk through, which is a subset of the slides that the board saw previously when I released the budget a couple of weeks ago, just for the benefit of folks who may be watching at home to essentially serve as a tee-up for the public hearing itself, which starts at 1:30. So Madam President, no real guidance or feedback I'm looking for today, other than just to draw the board's attention to that memo, we can have additional discussion on it, but then also to reference the fact they do have a brief presentation to go through before we get into the public hearing itself.
Okay, thank you. And as Jeff indicated, the updated budget information, I would implore my colleagues to take a list of all the things that are listed. It's about 20 or so, about 15 items, and rather than us going through every one, if you are not interested in one of them, to please let the Administrator know that this is not a priority for you versus us looking at each one and, no, I'm not interested in this one, but in a more professional, private way to submit to our Administrator the ones that you are interested in and the ones that you are not interested in, because when I say interested in, we have to have at least two commissioners in order to move it forward in our budget. So I think that's probably the best way to deal with this list. But I will open it up if there are any comments as it relates to the updated information. Vice President Reese.
Yeah, I just have a question about the process again. I didn't quite understand. You're going to present something else?
I just have a very brief presentation that gives the overview of the 2023 recommended budget. It's a subset of the slides that you've previously seen, just for folks who may be watching at home who want to understand what the guts of the budget are.
Okay. And Madam President, just from a process standpoint, your thoughts, I just wanted to make sure, sometimes, of course, we are not allowed to talk to each other, and that's state law, and sometimes I think the process is a little, I would say, different, but also, it's harder when I don't get to hear from you all, because it's kind of like the Administrator has all the authority to go back and try to interpret for us, and sometimes, you know, maybe not in a purposeful way, may not be able to articulate how we articulate it, or maybe it's something administration likes, and they might put a little more emphasis and not emphasis on it, so I'm just trying to figure out what's your process. I think Administrator Lou was trying to give us a chance, maybe, to talk about that. I'm not sure, is this the time, or when are we talking about?
Certainly, if you have any questions or comments, happy to accept those now. At the same time, you know, we'll have a couple more weeks, and I think we've recommended the budget be approved on December 15th, so we'll have a couple of other sessions as well. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that there was an updated set of policy items that had been provided to you.
Okay. Well, I guess I can just, do you want me to just, how do you want to do it?
Well, I was just going to say, when you look at the list, maybe two or three, I know who it might have come from, but I think it's real good that we're neutral on these items, and so that I can communicate with the Administrator where I am on each one, and hopefully, he would have a summary of what it means, what each one means, if I had any questions. But, I mean, I mean, if you want to just go down the list...
Yeah, well, I wasn't going, I was just going to articulate some of the items that I had some issues, if that's okay.
Okay, all right.
It may or may not be on the list. Is that what we're doing? I just don't like the, but I'll tell you what, I think I have a frustrating thing. I don't believe anyone can articulate better than the author, and, you know, certainly have a really good Administrator, but I also see times when it's the administration likes something, they kind of can explain it certain ways, and some numbers shape out certain ways, and if there's some things that they're not as excited about, it may not get the proper, you know, they may not be able to articulate it as good. So I just, I just wanted to highlight that in our budget, we're going to, I wanted to make sure that policies, because in some areas in the budget, policy is reflective, and some areas in this budget is not reflective. We're going to be opening up a new office dealing with drug and alcohol, and I support that. I want to have the similar policy written in here for the small business, Office of Small Business. I've said that several times. We put it in the budget last time, we gave it a little bit of money, not enough, I don't think, to really dig in. I want us to be number one for small business. It is the newest, fastest-growing component. Now, we did a good job with some grants, but now I'm talking about having a deliberate policy direction, a scorecard where they come and present to us, where are we with small businesses, different areas, and getting out of the silos. Had a great conversation, and I know she's here today, she'll be speaking ready, they have a program helping minority businesses, so does some others, but I want to be able to have Office of Small Business under that. There's a report, you go to our website, there's a one number, there's a one place to go, and they can direct you, follow up on it, and be able to report back to us. So I had asked for that in the budget, and to make sure that it's appropriately budgeted for our policy budget. And we have some grants, I believe, almost $4 million that we might be doing, so I just want to see that reflective in the budget. I'd asked about that. The second thing, the same thing for youth, and I did talk to Director Patton, but right now, we're just all over the place. There is no real Office of Youth, and even when they come in, it's, both Alloy and our JFS. We passed it in the budget last, this past year, supposed to be going this year, but nothing changed. Even when they come report to us, they forget, because nothing really changed. They call it a youth program, not no Office of Youth. And then every time I correct them, oh, well, that already showed that we did not put a structure in place for an Office of Youth, similar to what we did with drug and alcohol addiction. We, same way with Alloy, we tell them, oh, I forgot, it's Alloy, it's not the Office of Small Businesses. So at this time, I want it in the budget written out. The other thing, the same way with the 513 relief bus, which I just can't go anywhere without getting questions, where is that bus? We are building, although we had a nice body double, and it made it before the radiator fell out, we were able to help 4,000 people, it was a successful initiative. And when things are successful, even with a business, they continue it. If I run a store and a product is selling, I'm not going to stop selling that product. I want more of that product. If I am a CEO and a, something works, I don't cut, that doesn't get cut, moved to the side or reprogrammed, we continue with it and make it better. So with the bus, I know that's in ARPA funds, but since we're talking all funds, I wanted it reflected in here, what this bus is going to do. It's more than just rental assistance, it has a lot of other components. It is a mobile office of Hamilton County going out to the communities and bringing the services to the communities. And so I have, it seems to be a lot of misunderstanding, so I meet with one person, they say it's this, I meet with somebody else, they say it's that. I want it in the budget this time, the policy written, what's this going to do, how it's going to go. We have the money, so that's not an issue. I do continue to feel that we need marketing. You can have all these things, but don't nobody know about it. Great, we have a press conference, and we hope that one of the news people, but maybe you might not watch that station, you watch another station, or you don't read this here, you go get it there, or maybe you get it some other kind of way. I would think we need to have marketing for these programs that we have in the budget. I did mention the Senior Citizen Fund, and I just wanted to make sure that's at the $1 million. That was another successful program. Each of us got feedback from people saying that it was successful. So those are some of the things that I had that may be in there, but need to be tweaked so that we have a clear understanding. I also asked that each of these initiatives, to give us what quarter that you're going to roll them out, and really suggested that everything should be rolled out by the third quarter. We're in the fourth quarter right now, and we're onto another budget. We don't have a two-year budget, we got a one-year budget. So I wanted to get the rollout in advance. So there were some other things that we have in here, one of them being amateur sports, I'm going to get back on that. I don't know if I would say that I wanted a study, I'm not real big on those, but I did talk about some of the... wanted a, um, study. I'm not real big on those. But I did talk about some of the existing f, uh, things and people we do fund, to try to get them to look at. We spent a lot of money on professional sports, and those are seasonal. When the season is over, we don't make it, we, you, we don't get nothing out of them. I said that amateur sports, which is ninety-three billion-dollar industry, uh, how do we get a piece of that action? So, wanted to have a group that could be assembled to be able to look at that. There was someone who did present a opportunity to us, uh, and I know Jeff is looking into it. But I wanted that to go under tourism. We give money to tourism, and I just wanna make sure that some of those things are more identified in some of the policy that we're looking toward. So, I wanted to have tourism, but I wanna look into sports tourism. Um, so that's why that is, uh, in, in there. Um, the other thing is, we have a disparity study that we have. We had a big presentation. You know, um, I didn't really see any funding. I saw that some minor things, uh, some important things, policy-wise, but are there things that need to have funding? Um, so I did put that in there. I did put in, I was looking at the land equity, uh, ownership and partnering, maybe with Housing Opportunities Made Equal, who is looking at that. Um, and I didn't think we need a, additional earmark. We had an earmark last year. We didn't get it kicked off. We in the fourth quarter. It didn't happen. Ran out of time. I'm saying, keep that earmark from last year in here. I'm not looking for an additional earmark, uh, till we can find out. I think we've hired, uh, Mr. Ludo can talk about that. They've hired, I think, a consultant to look at that. I met with CDF. They're doing some things. So, there may be some synergies there. I just wanna make sure that that money that we put in this year, that never got used because we ran out of time, would be able to stay in there for next year. I'm not looking for additional funds. So, I wanted to clarify, uh, that, uh, Mr. Ludo, uh, indicated to me that, um, he thought I was looking for additional money. But that money is still there? Is that what, is that what will happen? And we don't have to take no action?
Ultimately, when we go to use that money, we'll have to appropriate that, and, but, but nothing you need to do in the bu, in this budget to, um, to again, set that aside. It's already set aside. It will continue to be set aside.
Okay. So, I just wanted my colleagues to understand that. Uh, that was one thing. The other thing is the Cancer Caucus, uh, that I'm, uh, very much committed to. I think there's funding out there. Uh, President Joe Biden mentioned that there's money. He's got a cancer initiative. And I just thought if we had, uh, a, uh, a group, if you would, if you will, a committee that deals with this, of experts that would be on that committee, I thought would be helpful for us. There's no budgetary, um, there's no budgetary item that I see it at, at this time, but I see it as, uh, a resolution possibly that I could bring forward to, uh, to organize that. Uh, is that correct, Mr. Ludo? Is that what?
Uh, yes, Madam Vice President, yeah. Uh, nothing that I, that I'm aware of, unless there was a certain programmatic, uh, direction you had in mind. But absent that, uh, the board is certainly within its right to create an ad hoc committee to stud, to look at an issue, bring stakeholders together to do that. And that in and of itself wouldn't have a budgetary implication.
Right. And that was my goal, to have that. We have a lobbyist that we pay in Washington, and that lobbyist could possibly, uh, help with the group in terms of letting them know what's available and how do we go after it. We also have a grant writer that we brought on, uh, that you brought on, who also could work with the group if there's grants out there, uh, that we're missing. And the goal of the group, though, is to be able to give us a presentation and work with our health commissioner, where are we with this cancer? And what are we doing that might, I think we're one of the areas that has the highest, we're growing, of the highest people getting cancer. Why is that? And what can we, what can we do? Um, the other thing was a discount card. Uh, the goal of that is that we have a, um, there is a, uh, discount card out right now that, uh, I think it was publicized years ago, hasn't been publicized as much now, hasn't been accessible, to help people with their, uh, pharmacy pay. Uh, these medicines are jumping out the roof. And this discount card will allow them, if they're a member of, uh, a resident of Hamilton County, to go take the help, the discount card and get some additional discounts on their medicine. And so, one of the things, uh, I wanted to have is to have this discount card, be able to market it as part of our, uh, relief efforts, and even look at possibly expanding where we can have eventually a card. If you live in Hamilton County, we've got a card that 'll help you with pharmacy and other things. People are looking for a break. If you can give me five dollars off, ten dollars off, that would be great. Um, so, looking at having this card, which we're already working on, 'cause the card is out there, marketing it and looking at if there's other things we can expand that might be able to help, um, help with discounts. So, that's what the, the idea was, that, uh, I presented as it relates to the, uh, discount card. Um, lastly, I think, um, I wanted to make sure, um, a couple of things. On workforce, I know we have a grant out there, but our workforce, uh, grant says you have to already been doing this. And it kinda cuts out, uh, possible other, uh, workforce activities that may not be in Cincinnati. I just wanted to point a clarification. Uh, I know that there's a program in Columbus. I believe Commissioner Treehouse also has met with, uh, some of the, uh, union representatives. It's a program in Urban League. They're looking at, that is working in Columbus, has been working. I just wanted to make sure that they were not disqualified from being able to, uh, apply for this grant, uh, and looking at bringing it possibly to Cincinnati. So, I wanted to just get, basically, that one was just a clarification. And if so, if we have to vote on a clarification, I wanted to go ahead and vote on that, so that they could at least compete for those, uh, for those dollars. Um, I believe that the, um, I think that's pretty much the part I have. I'm still pushing for inclusion and equity, uh, on the banks. We don't have one African-American business. We do have a Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame that we're building. And I think it's important for people to know that after the county in general has, has spent almost a billion, over a billion dollars out, over there, the Walk of Fame is less than one percent, less than one percent. And if you look at equity and inclusion, and the county being thirty percent African-American, uh, and if you look at the music festival, which, uh, ninety percent of their cons, uh, attendees are African-American, it's the number-one economic generator for the county for an event, uh, one hundred and seven point five million dollars each year. And those dollars go into our Convention Facility Fund, that we help, uh, do a lot of other things. Uh, but not one dime goes back to African-American community. So, um, I stand firmly for the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. I think it's really small. Out of a hundred and ninety-eight acres, it's only half an acre. Uh, and out of a billion dollars, it's less than one percent of what the county has ever invested. Um, I would also think that, um, the, uh, I would like to attach it to the Convention Facility Authority, or the TOT, TOT, uh, Transit Occupancy Tax, and look at being able to make sure that we have money to, uh, continue with the software. It's very software-driven. It's like, uh, Disney World and a half acre through technology. And, uh, it's gonna be amazing. But I think that, um, I'd like to see that. I noticed you put a, a little small amount. We don't know what it is, but I like to up that, uh, because we always can go lower, uh, versus going higher. So, uh, that's, I wanted to let my colleagues know about that, that I'd like to see, uh, that. If the festival were, if we're going up on hotel rates by almost ninety percent, then why would, uh, why would it be a very, very minimal amount toward the upkeep of this facility? So, just wanted to highlight those things and get people a kind of an understanding of how, in terms of our budget, uh, with the, uh, Walk of Fame, um, and, 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 uh, it's tourism, and I think it should be under tourism. We put money in tourism. I just wanna direct where, how we're, uh, utilizing those dollars and putting them into things that I think would have a, a good return on investment. So, uh, those are the things that I have. I hope I have, uh, answered some of the questions of my colleagues on some of the things that I had submitted. Um, and, uh, look forward to the discussion in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you. So, um, I'm anxious to hear from the public about, um, their, what they're gonna bring to us by way of, um, their, their thoughts about the budget. Um, I, the, the process here, you know, we, we did do a policy document that guided the budget for the administration. Uh, we got a recommendation from the administration, and I have found the administration's efforts to keep us all in the loop, to be very fair and equal and, um, robust when we're asking questions. I think the more appropriate venue for any conversations outside of the public conversation, which we've all engaged in, is to have our chiefs of staff who can, uh, who are in all these meetings, who can convey, uh, what we are thinking and what the, what the history is behind some of the recommendations that we're making, so that each office does have an understanding, from each office's perspective, um, why things were, are being advocated for, why they showed up in the policy document, why we might consider them, um, as a board to move forward with. So, I know the chiefs have been meeting. I think that needs to continue, obviously, so that we can get some conclusive, um, direction from the board. Um, and, and as I've said in previous meetings, the two things that, um, I had on my, in my policy document that did not make their way into the budget were the large event grant, um, money that we allocated last year, one point five, that helped a number of really large events bring economic development dollars into this community. I think that should continue. And then the other one is related to bike trails. We have some money, uh, set aside for bike trails, but, um, as we know, they're very expensive. They too can create economic development, especially in some of these neighborhoods where there has not been that kind of investment. And so, I'm anxious to get moving on some of the bike trail money. And, um, it, it is a situation where the more we put into that fund, the more we can do, and the quicker we can do it. And so, I will continue to advocate for those two things, which are monetary priorities that were in my policy document. There are a couple of other things that I added in, but they really don't have a budget impact. So, um, I hope that the chiefs will continue to meet to, so that we can get an understanding of where each office is on these items that we've all put forward, and we can, again, have some conclusion to that as we move into the final, um, phases of the budget. But obviously, we, this is our first public hearing day, and the public will also influence, you know, what we do with this budget. So, I'm anxious to hear from the public, and I, um, I will say in advance, thank you for being here.
Thank you. And, uh, I just wanna say, I'm also anxious to hear from the public. And my rationale as it relates to how to deal with this budget issue today was threefold, really. Um, as, as commissioners, we're gonna have so many additional times to speak about our, our specific items. We have fifteen items that are on the updated budget list. Um, and I understand that because we put them on the list, that we are individually, um, very sensitive to the items that we think need to be funded. And my purpose, uh, for not specifically discussing each one is, as items come up, which I've heard a couple that I'm not in agreement with, I don't think this is the place to say, "Well, I don't agree with that," and, or, um, but I agree that the chiefs of staff, um, if I have an issue with any one of the, um, items, I'll have my chief of staff go to the other ones, and they work very well together to get me a better understanding. So, that was a rationale not to flush it, flesh it out today, 'cause, uh, I have plenty of things to say that are on here. But we're gonna have another opportunity. This is a time for public to have their input, and we can, um, of course, get ver, uh, better clarity as we move it into, uh, our chiefs of staff's offices. So, at this point...
Madam President, could I, could I just say one thing? 'Cause I, in terms of process, um, and maybe I just have a different process. I don't mind the chief of staffs. They do it all the time. But when we talk about the budget, and some things I, I presented, these things came from people, or people, a lot of people that I ran into, and I promised them that I would introduce it. I want them to know it's been introduced, uh, whether it gets in or not. Uh, the, the chief of staffs, they meet, uh, that's great, and we, that's the negotiation. I guess they go back and forth on things and explain. But I wanna make sure that if someone asks me to do something, or some folks, and we think it's a good thing, I want them to know it was introduced. So, that's, that's my only purpose for presenting it. Uh, you know, how I like things. I love things out in the open. I'm very transparent about that. So, I just wanted to make that. I don't have a problem with the chief of staffs. Of course, we know that that's gonna be the process. But I just wanted people, you might be out there watching and say, "Hey, did she introduce something? I had asked her about this." It has been introduced, and I wanted them to know what the rationale. It may make it, it may not make it, but it's been introduced. Just like the thirty percent, we get that going. And, uh, I, I, I have it on there. It may make it, it may not make it. And I don't wanna vote it down where it can't even get introduced. So, I'm letting people know that I'm introducing it, whether it makes it or not make it. I heard you, and I introduced it. So, that's why, um, I wanted to make sure. I didn't wanna, uh, sit here and not explain some of the things that were introduced. So, but that's no problem with the chief of staffs. But I will continue to keep the public updated on what we, what we did try to introduce. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I encourage anyone that I meet that has concerns as it relates to the budget, not just concerns, but getting it into the budget. We have public hearings. We're gonna have three of them. So, if you can't come in, you can get on Zoom and make your comments known, and we'll make sure that we hear you. Um, so, we're gonna move forward. We have a budget, uh, did you wanna say something?
No, just, uh, just, uh, getting ready to tip the quick presentation here. So, I assumed you were moving into the, to the hearing. So, did you wanna open the hearing? And I could do this as a kickoff to that, or?
Well, that's what I was, yeah. We're just opening up the, the public hearing, uh, to discuss our 2023, uh, budget, and Jeff is gonna do a, a short intro.
And this will be the quickest budget presentation in history, I promise. Uh, so, just a, assuming I can get the clicker to work. Um, all right, Kristy, it's not working. So, if you could hit the first slide there, please. Um, but, uh, just in terms of the county's all-fund budget recommendation, uh, it is recommended at one point two billion. The general fund budget, uh, portion of that, which is the largest fund, is three hundred and fifty-two point two million. Next slide, Kristy. Uh, this just provides a, just a, a graphical overview of the different funds, uh, that are, some of the different funds that are in the, uh, the all-funds budget. Again, with the general fund being the largest, uh, job and family services, stadiums and parking, developmental disability services. Uh, so, you, you have the general fund and a host of restricted, uh, enterprise and agency funds, uh, also under the, uh, all-funds budget. Kristy? Uh, in terms of major revenue sources, uh, the primary revenue source for the county is the sales tax, coming in at forty percent, uh, of our, uh, annual revenues, followed by service fees and property taxes. Uh, go ahead, Kristy. Our major expenditure drivers, primary point here is that roughly seventy-four percent, uh, seventy-three percent of our budget is related to public safety and judicial matters. Uh, so criminal justice and public safety represents, uh, almost a, a good three-quarters of the, of the county's budget, uh, followed by general government services, public works, economic development, et cetera. Kristy? Our general fund reserve, um, is projected at, uh, by the close of 2023, to be at seventeen point, uh, four percent, uh, or roughly sixty-one point four million. That is roughly in line with, uh, the Government Finance Officers Association standard of two months' operating expenditures. Kristy? Uh, and just a bit about some of the policy priorities, uh, within the budget. Uh, the, the budget supports, uh, operating and effective government, everything from, uh, what that includes in terms of compensating our employees, uh, making sure we have, uh, dollars there for all the routine activities and the mandated activities of the county, um, the, uh, operation of elections, recorder's office, treasurer's office, facilities, capital projects, to make sure that our building stock is, is maintained, et cetera, uh, investing in our local economy, uh, every, everything from funding our economic development partners and ready, the port and, and alloy, uh, to investing in grants, uh, such as the community revitalization grants, community impact grants, et cetera, um, of, of all the affordable housing work that will, that will, uh, flow into, uh, 2023 as well, uh, maintaining a safe community, all of the criminal justice, public safety operations of the county, operation of the sheriff's office, both patrol functions, uh, and the operations of the Justice Center, uh, the op, uh, all of the intelligence-led operations, priorities of, of the sheriff, uh, the, uh, operations of the court, the prosecutor, uh, coroners and crime lab, uh, the nine-one-one office also included, uh, under maintaining a safe community, fostering a thriving community, everything from the JFS, uh, all the JFS operations of the county, all of the levy operations, everything from supporting children's services, developmental disability services, senior services, uh, the, uh, senior utility, uh, and home repair program that was mentioned a little bit earlier, uh, tucked under, under this policy priority, as would be the Office of Youth. Uh, and then finally, protecting our environment and public infrastructure, uh, everything from, uh, operating the, uh, county engineer's office and maintenance of our, maintenance and repair of roads, uh, and, and bridges, our stormwater activities, uh, maintaining fire hydrants out in the county, uh, investing in, uh, and improving the recycling efforts of, of, in, in our community to... to maintain a cleaner environment, air quality control efforts as well would be under protecting the environment and infrastructure. So commissioners, that is a very high-level, brief overview of the budget. I wanted to keep it brief so that we could get quickly to the, to the public. Madam President, happy to answer any questions, if there are any, before we move into the public comment period.
I'd like to move into public comment, and then we can open it up for any questions we may have. We have, Kim Lotterbach is here to talk about the budget, you have two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. As you know, Kim Lotterbach, I have the pleasure of serving as the president and CEO of Ready Cincinnati. We are the region's leading economic development organization, and I'm here to respectfully ask that you continue to fund your current investment in Ready Cincinnati. We are the first point of contact for businesses looking to grow, expand, or relocate in Southwest Ohio, and we do this a number of ways. For example, each year, our team meets with hundreds of companies throughout the region through our Business Retention and Expansion Program to identify opportunities for growth that Ready may be able to support. We, additionally, we have a business development team with a robust travel schedule that aggressively markets the region both domestically and internationally for opportunities for that growth. Once we have identified a growth opportunity, we're able to leverage programs at Jobs Ohio to support that growth. Our work encompasses a wide range of support, from assisting small mom-and-pop businesses in utilizing an inclusion grant to add an employee, all the way to corporate headquarter expansion projects that feature hundreds of jobs, is additionally. Over the last two years in Hamilton County alone, Ready has leveraged over $12 million in grants and loans to support the creation of 3,600 jobs and $210 million in new payroll. The recent growth in those jobs also was paired with over $240 million in capital investment from these businesses to acquire land, build new locations, and purchase equipment necessary for their growth. In many cases, we are competing with serious offers from other Midwest cities like Nashville, Indianapolis, and Columbus. Since 2021, Ready has helped retain over 6,600 jobs within the county that had a potential risk of leaving. Ready is proud to have supported companies throughout Hamilton County, from Forest Park to Anderson Township, to Harrison, to Lincoln Heights, to Cincinnati Proper, and many more of the communities. We look forward to working with the county, its many communities, and our partners in alloy development to make this the number-one destination to grow business. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone on Zoom at all?
There's a free house.
Okay, all righty. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Commissioner Semardus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll open it up for any questions you may have had for Jeff's presentation. I just wanna make a general comment, I'm just really concerned about the lack of public input. This is our first public hearing, we are having one in the evening, which I am going to talk to my colleagues and see if we need to change that date, but evening is so important. And we have another one coming up on Thursday at 1:00. But I am imploring the residents that are in Hamilton County, we're talking about, our all-funds budget is $1.2 billion. Our general fund budget is 352.2 million. So I know you guys trust us, you voted us in, you believe we'll do the right thing, but we wanna hear from you. We wanna know, are we doing the right thing? Are there things that are in the budget or not in the, you'd like to have in there or take out? But, you know, to have one person come for public hearing is great, but we are imploring you, I am imploring you, to please either come in, or get on Zoom, or come to our evening meeting, which will be at the Board of Elections, we'll be talking more about that. So Jeff, if you wanna, any questions for Jeff's presentation?
No, I don't have a question for Jeff's presentation. I certainly join you in encouraging people to participate. However, I also feel, I will just say from my perspective, a lot of the things that I am putting in here or including are from people that I hear from, so you don't necessarily have to be at the public hearing. And I know some of the things that my colleagues have put forward are things that we hear, because we have been a board that's been out in the community, I mean, we have been out there. So if you have something, you wanna email me an idea, and it's something, you know, I'll fasten along, bring it forward. If you can, make it to the hearing, love to see your face. If you could make it on Zoom, that's great, but if it's something I heard from you during this year, or you've called my office, or you've emailed me something, or you saw me out at the grocery store, and it makes sense, I'm gonna, these are the things that I have included in here, and I think all of us have done the same. So I just wanted to highlight that, and a lot of stuff that we have already suggested in here, a lot of these ideas have come from the people, and we have been the representative to kind of bring it forward, each of us bring it forward, as we have heard things. So I just wanted to highlight that, that in this budget, some, I've seen some of the ideas that I've heard of, or heard you all mention, that you've seen and heard from someone, that we have brought back forward, and we will, I know all of us will continue to do that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse, any questions?
I'm just grateful for the comments and hope, yeah, I think 1:00 on a Tuesday afternoon is challenging for people, so hopefully the evening hearing will bear more fruit. We'll see. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. I would like to bring up to my colleagues, there is an event that we were invited to, I don't know if you ladies plan on going, if you are, to let me know if we need to do another evening meeting on a different day or time, not time, but a different day. If it doesn't impact you, I'd like to know that too, and we'll keep it the same, okay, as soon as possible.
I don't know what we're talking about. So if there's an effort to move, I'm open to that, I just don't know what we're talking about right now.
And I didn't say it on purpose. Okay. Check your schedule and see if it's on your schedule. Okay, so we'll move forward. Should, are any final comments or anything, yes, Commissioner?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll move forward, we have executive sessions, we actually have three of them, and so, Mike, is it okay if I just, since they're all the same code, if I can just say that there are three executive sessions? I know there are different people involved in it, should I read each one?
I think you're gonna say that you're moving to executive session. You have three separate collective bargaining, you know, there are...
Okay. Sure. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G4 to discuss collective bargaining, and that's item five, six, and seven.
Second.
Commissioner Semardus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.